Speeding to order, please. We have the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Ann Sergi.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Chairman Bonnick.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sudas Little.
Here.
Commissioner Rattenbach is absent with prior notice. Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
Six present.
Thank you. So that brings us to Communications, Proclamations, Presentations. Do we have the medical examiner here?
I do not see them.
Right.
So I don't know. We just talked to them a couple of days ago and they were coming, so I'm not sure what circumstances are.
All right. Well, maybe.
We got the report.
You got the report, yeah. Yeah.
Well, and if they show up late, maybe we'll let them talk down.
I was just going to ask if that would be okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Traffic in Traverse is terrible. Right. And I would hate to have them come all the way up here and not be able to report.
Exactly.
Okay.
All right. So we'll move that, you know, to a later time if they show up. So then that brings us to approval of minutes. I think we have them from June 11th special session, May 21st, May 14th, and June 11th are the regular session. Commissioner Wessel.
Motion to approve the regular session minutes of May 21.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Second.
Sudas. Any others?
Motion to approve the Executive Board meeting minutes of June 11, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero. And from the executive from May 14th.
Go for it, Ty. And a roll.
Motion to approve the Executive Board minutes of Tuesday, May 14th.
Up second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero.
Motion to approve the best session minutes of June 11th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you very much. So then that would bring us to public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't think we have any late additions or, do we? No. I didn't, I didn't see any.
Can I go first?
So now that brings us, yes, to public comment.
No.
No?
We have to approve the agenda. Right?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Go ahead.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
All right. Sorry.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven or six zero. Thank you. Now, we're at public comment. We have these public comments. I'm trying to get through it. Seeing none, then we'll move on to our action items. And the first one up is a workman's comp renewal recommendation. Can you have Mr. Chris Bratson here from Bonnick Agency? Would you want to come forward, Chris?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for hearing me. This is my second attempt at working with the county. Now, you recall my meeting of last year as well. I called the Administrator's office about obtaining permission to present another proposal this year, and Chet was great. He was gracious, told me he needed the proposal by the 10th. The decision would be made on the 17th of June. And I also mentioned that you're currently insured with the Accident Fund of Michigan, which is a company I represent in my office as well. So if you're not happy with the current agency, you can change agencies and have exactly the same product, same billing, same everything. The contracts with different agencies are the same. So he said he would get the information to me and his office. Laurel Evans sent me the worksheets with the payroll, and I went through my due diligence preparing to submit a proposal for the 10th when Chet had told me that was due. And she called on the 4th and said, "I need your proposal today." And I said, "Well, Chet told me the 10th." She goes, "I'm preparing the dot, the packet for the board meeting, and I need it." So I dropped everything, got some staff working on it, and we presented a proposal through Laura that same day. And I followed up on the 7th, and I said, "So when is this meeting and, you know, what's going on on this?" And I received no answer. On the 13th, I sent another note to Mr. Janik's office and said, "Where are we? Has a decision been made? What's going on?" And I was told that the meeting was held on the 10th, that they were surprised I wasn't there, and that a decision was made that they weren't going to accept my bid because I was $900 higher. That surprised me. And I called Will, and I asked Will what he thought I ought to do, because there's been kind of a disconnect with my ability to try and do business with you. I mentioned to Chet about my ability to assume the work comp policy with the Accident Fund, and that was not communicated with my proposal to you in the executive meeting. So you did not have all the information that I was presenting. So there was an omission. Then I saw the proposals, and there's a $900 difference. I know that in the public sector, that public boards, governmental boards pervasively are allowed to make decisions with a 3% to 5% leeway on bids. That just is good business. It's done in the private sector, it's done in the public sector. My bid to you as presented was less than 2% difference. And I'd like to appeal to you to reconsider my proposal for your work comp.
I just want to clarify, because the 7th has a different version of what happened. I did call Chris, tell him we're going for bids and push him to apply, and that Laura will be getting back with him. Laura said she contacted him, gave permission, told all five companies the deadline is June 3rd. It was on her webpage, it was due June 3rd. After it did not get to her, she said she called up the message saying it was due and when the meeting was. So four of the five companies called through the process, made a deadline date. I'm not sure what the communication was between Laura and you.
Yeah, that's it. I got the emails.
We're surprised that you weren't here.
Yeah, I didn't know the, I was invited to the meeting. I'm sorry.
Yeah. The other ones were here, presented.
Okay.
Laura said all of them had the same exact information. It was on her webpage where the deadline date was.
Okay.
And when the meetings were. And so.
I wasn't checking the webpage. I thought I was creating a line of communication.
But I'll tell you, there's another version from the 7th, and she did communicate with the office several times.
There's no email of that evidence.
She says she talked to your staff people, reminding you when the deadline was. So how many, how many employees do you have?
Eleven.
And do they live in Leland County?
All but two.
All but two. You know, and so that, that's why I asked him to come, because we do want to support businesses in Leland County. And, and he is right that it's less than a 2% difference. And, you know, and we didn't consider it, I think, because he really wasn't here to present it. You know, so, so I told him to come and that we would consider the difference.
So essentially, I'm offering two choices. You can offer to have us assume your current policy, which then there is no difference in premium at all, or you can accept my alternate proposal, which is $900 difference, less than 2%. You can do it any way you want to, and that's obviously you have a third choice of not accepting either of those. But I thought I'd come and have a chat.
Commissioner Ann Sergi.
I'm sorry if there was a miscommunication in the process, but we've already gone through the process. And that's not to say that you can't do it the next time, but, you know, we went through the process with everybody, and if there was some miscommunication, you know, I apologize if that happened, but I don't want to go back and revisit the same discussion again. Are we going to make that same offer to the other four companies?
No. What he's, what he's proposing is that we accept his offer instead of the other one.
I understand that.
And that isn't final until today. That's what I told him.
Yep, and that's true.
So for 2% difference, we can have it in Leland County where the employees are, or we can send it downstate.
We were just awarded the Leland County Chamber Business of the Year. We do lots of work in this county. We do work in other counties, too, and we have large clients like Northwestern Michigan College and Traverse City State Bank. I mean, we're familiar with dealing with larger entities. This is not foreign for us. I wish the process had been smoother, and if it was on my end, I apologize, but I'm giving you what was presented to me.
Commissioner Sudas Little.
Other than the fact that you're local, what were the other arguments that you'd put forward as to accept your bid over the other?
I don't understand that question.
Why would we choose to engage with you rather than the other person that we were looking at going with, besides the fact that you're local?
That's not enough?
It may be. I'm just asking, is there more?
The workers' compensation policy, as it's written in Michigan, is very short, very succinct, and it's unchanged. Every carrier statutaries require to have the same policy.
That's what the other gentleman said as well.
So every carrier is offering the same coverage. It comes down to payment plan options, audits, familiarity with the people that you've been working with in that carrier, or are you willing to change? The carriers all have loss control. Selective insurance company has two full-time loss control people, are in Michigan, they do $700 million in municipal business. It's an A-plus rated carrier. It's, it's a solid insurance offer to you that gives you an option.
Thank you.
Well, would the service be better, then?
I don't know what kind of service you're getting, but I certainly, I'm three minutes away. That can't hurt.
I think that's the kind of question she was really asking. Do we get better service? Would, you know, be, be more prompt or something like that?
The, well, I can tell you statistically that our retention is over 95% at our office. So if history proves that clients are happy in our office, that statistic ought to support
So we need a motion one way or the other. You know, if they want to go with this proposal, Commissioner Ann Sergi.
I move to recommend board, or I move that board commissioners maintain workers' compensation coverage with Peterson McGregor.
Okay. All those in favor? Or, I'm sorry, do you want to talk about it?
Did you want to speak to the motion at all? Because I was, I have this.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it would, in my opinion, it would be unfair not to have Peterson McGregor here to have that same, to have them say that have their same opportunity to rebut. You know, we had that meeting, we had that discussion. I don't see how we, you know, I have not heard anything that says that we should change from the process that would not be unfair to Peterson McGregor. You know, were they invited to come tonight because this was on the agenda?
Yes. I mean, everybody was, you know, so.
I was told this is the meeting where the decision is made. I was not told that it would be held in advance of this.
Yeah, we, we have our, I'm going to.
Commissioner Lautner.
Okay. First of all, I just want to apologize for whatever mix-up there was and that you couldn't be here to present Tuesday, because Tuesday is the, the work course meeting, and that's where we do all of the comparisons and all of the groundwork and all of the homework. And so, other than reading the minutes, I haven't even looked at any of the proposals since last Tuesday, when I was real confident with our motion in moving this forward. So, that being said, I would just be uncomfortable changing my vote tonight without re-looking at everything again. So Peterson McGregor has been good with us, and, you know, our factors have been good, and I don't know, too, if any of that would change, if we were to change midstream, we'll be stood at those same factors that in multiple, in multipliers and in those ratings. And that's important to me. So that's my reason for supporting the motion.
The expiration date of your policy is July 1st. So there would be no changes from the proposals that are presented from all carriers. If you elect to change.
Any other comments? Commissioner Wessel.
I, I would like to move forward with the recommendation that we made last Tuesday, but I would encourage an application from, from you the next, the next round, because we do like to do local, and we welcome that. But at this point, I would support where we were last week.
Any other comment? I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to oppose this, because I do believe that if we, our general policy is to support locally, and if you can do it for, within the 2%, I believe that that, and we're going to get the same kind of service or better, and locally, then I think we should go that way. And that's, you know, that has been the policy of this board, to try to do local business whenever possible. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes five to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. So, so now we have the, the medical examiner here. We will go back to that if everyone's okay with that?
Yes. Apologies. Did you have, did you have any challenges?
We're still in the case. We, we've been in there a couple of times this time of year.
Yeah.
We tried to avoid it.
We chose not to, we chose not to try and meet some of your local law enforcement.
(laughing). Well, I felt like news. Thank you. And that was a wise move. They're, they're, our boys are pretty good out there.
Yeah. Yep. We saw them in action, and we just drove by, so. Anyway, thank you for this opportunity. Are there any commissioners who are new?
No.
Okay. We don't have any, all right. So everybody kind of knows that I'm Joyce DeYoung, I'm the medical examiner, and I'm, you have an annual report in front of you now. I think this is the second one that we have for, so the second year for Leland. And, and one of the things I do like to just point out about our system here, we are, we're not local, we're Kalamazoo, however, we do have, there is a lot of local presence, and we have a number of, we have currently six, was it six or, we have seven investigators that are local that are in the counties, and when a death occurs, they're, they're responding to the, to the, to the location where the death occurred, and they're, it's a shared program with Grand Traverse, so there's one person on call for both counties. But so there's, there's, in addition to that investigation piece, there's transport, if someone dies and, and the decedent needs to come in for an exam, there's transport. I think sometimes when people think of the medical examiner system, they, they jump right to, well, that's the autopsies, and there is that. But we also are completing death certificates, or at least our portion of them. We, we sign a large number of cremation permits, which it's not just looking at a paper and signing it, it's actually reviewing that death and, and looking at the death certificate and deciding, does it need additional investigation? If it does, having that investigation done. We work on bodies that are unclaimed, which in our office, we're, I, I'm the medical examiner for 12 counties now, the 11 listed at the bottom of your report, plus Barien, which started this, this year in 2019. So we have one person in our office who completely just focused on bodies that are unclaimed, either the family, we can't find family, or there is family and they don't have, they don't have money to pay for, for final disposition. But we also have, like, our forensic anthropologist, which I think they've been up here a fair number of times with the, when skeletal remains are found, and we have forensic odontologist. So, you know, the whole medical examiner program is, is kind of, kind of large. If you look to, to the section on Leland, Leland is a, really, by comparison, a kind of a nice, quiet county, but one of the things that you'll see, and that was over on page, it's on page 41, that between 2017 and 2018, there was actually a fairly, a fairly substantial jump in the number of deaths that occurred in the county from 148 to 175. I don't know why. So when you have more deaths that occur in the county, a few more get reported to us, and, you know, that, that sort of increases that activity as well. But even though that was the case, we only had, from, from the county, only nine of them required a post-mortem examination. So, so, and that, that was actually down from last year, which just means that I think the deaths that were occurring were most likely naturals and natural deaths that didn't require additional, additional examination. Fortunately, you hear a lot about the opioid problem in, in counties, and we didn't have any opioid-related fatalities in Leland County this year. So there was, I believe, one last year, and there were, there was one drug-related death that was actually an alcohol overdose, just drank too much, too much alcohol, but there was not an opioid involved in that death. So that, that's still kind of, but that's a really good thing. Some, some of the counties are really struggling with that, but we're, we've not seen that be a problem here, here in Leland. One of the things that's probably most interesting, and the reason why we put all of the counties in one report together, is that when I would give these to commissioners, they always want to know what's going on in the other, you know, in counties that are similar in size. And although I don't have all of the counties in the state here, I think it's back on page 64, when you look at Leland, probably your closest to Mason and Osceola. And I think, yeah, that's, population-wise, it's the smallest of our, of our counties, but, but the population, even just looking at Osceola, the number of deaths were, were about the same, but they had a higher percentage that were reported to us in Osceola, and the higher number of them actually came down for, for post-mortem examinations, too. So the 12 versus the 7. And that's probably because they have a hospital in Osceola in Reed City. And so when people are, if something happens in, you know, McCosta near there, whatever, McCosta County, and they're transported into that county, and that's where they die, that is, that's where the number is for us. And so I know there are a number of events that happened in Leland County, but they get transferred over to Grand Traverse County into Monson, and that's where they died. And so they get, they get tabulated with Grand Traverse, which actually then has a, by, for their population, has a very high death rate. And it's, it's one of those interesting things, if you're trying to figure out, you know, like, how busy a county is going to be, I, I don't necessarily look so closely to the population, I look to see how many people, you know, what the occurrence death rate is. So I think some of the, the highlights from the past year, we've maintained our full accreditation with National Association of Medical Examiners, and we're, we still have a very high referral rate to Gift of Life, which even after, even if someone dies at home, in many cases, although they wouldn't be an organ donor, like for heart, liver, kidneys, they could still donate things like heart valves, cordias. And so those are the cases that we refer to Gift of Life. We have, we have a very, very high referral rate. So we, you know, between that and, and each, each county also has a child death review team meeting, and I personally try and attend all of those. I don't make every one, but for the 12 counties, I, and we do a joint one, right, with Grand Traverse, but I, I think I've made all but one of those meetings, so we try and come up here. And the whole point with the child death review team meeting is to look at, if, if children died in, in your county, in your community, to look at, why did they die, and what can we do to prevent it? The whole focus isn't on trying to blame somebody or assign fault to it, but rather to what can be implemented, what can we do to try and prevent these deaths in the future? And some of that's on a statewide level, but sometimes there are local initiatives as well. So it's a really active, good, solid team up here that, that, that we're, we're part of with that. So, so it's, I, I think we've done, we've done well this year. We've added a website, and it's actually on the front, the front cover, it's mimedicalexaminer.com, which is, if you get a chance to look at it, it's been really great just for families, because we can refer them there, because they ask things about, you know, how do I get an autopsy report? How do I get a death certificate? If it's a death certificate, we, you know, on there, if, if you go to it, it should link back to the county clerk's office for that county, so that they, because we don't issue the death certificates, but we try and give them that information. We're adding resources there, too, about if they're, if they need, you know, help with grieving and, and loss and, and any type of support like that. We're adding resources like that as well for the families. But any questions they might have are largely addressed right there. It's also a great source for funeral directors and wondering, you know, how do I get cremation permits or whatever that is? So, so that might be something to look at, too, at some point, so. But I think it's been a good year. Wendy, do you have any?
I just wanted to add that your sheriff's department and Martinson Funeral Home are good partners to us. So Martinson is one of our four funeral homes that transport, particularly if families choose them, then we, you know, typically they are the ones that transport. On occasion, it would be another funeral, but it's always a funeral home, so it's always someone who, that's what they do for a living.
Yeah. Yeah, they have been, like, everybody in the county, like you said, too, law enforcement, sheriff's department, they've just been really great to work with. Yes, sir?
Of the Grand Traverse numbers that you said were, were higher, is it possible to break those out by county of residence, if you wanted to?
It is, yeah.
Because it seems, it seems like that would give us a better.
I know, I know. We started, we actually, I did it a little bit for when I see Grand Traverse commissioners tomorrow morning, and I, I did it just for traffics, you know, like, just to show them where, where the incident occurred for a motor vehicle-related fatality. And only of the, it's 20-some deaths that they had, but only three of the collisions actually occurred in their county. So I think that, that's one of those, it's on a go-forward basis, I'm really going to try and do that. I think there's a way to, you know, to do that search.
Yeah, I could go back and I could say to Chet, and he could forward it along, if that's something you want to see.
It'd just be interesting.
Yeah.
I had that same question.
Primarily for Grand Traverse to compare that piece, or?
Well, just how many of our people, you know, get transported over there?
Sure.
And end up dying over there, you know, just, just, you know, how does that skew the numbers?
Yeah, yeah. We can get that, I can actually pull those numbers, and I'll, I'll send them to Chet, and you can distribute them. But we'll try and move that into the annual report, too, next year. It's kind of.
Thank you.
Yeah. It is a lot of numbers. I mean, it's like I said in, in the letter, too, that we also, a little message at the beginning, we recognize these are all numbers, but behind every one of those numbers is a family or community, people that are affected by the, by a loss. And so that, that's not lost on us. We're, we're pretty sensitive about that.
Commissioner Ann Sergi.
Do you have any data yet from the elder death review team down in Kalamazoo that, you know, is anything coming out of that that's, you know, really, hey, this is a great idea, you know? Or is it just too soon to?
No, I wouldn't say that. Like, I think it's a good idea. I think, I, you know, I think for here, we could, because there's probably a fair number of elder deaths here, but, but we just talked about that recently, right? Where we're going to actually going to try and do that regionally. We should do it, you know, put the two counties together. It's been, what happens is there's so much information and communication between different groups. We, we find out which, which nursing homes are in trouble, you know, which ones are, you know, not doing well, and we were actually very involved. They just shut down a nursing home. Laura came in and shut down a nursing home in Kalamazoo County, and then somebody died, like, just as that process was going on, and, you know, and they knew to call us and to get us involved, even though it was an apparent natural death. There's, so there's some benefit in improving the investigation, but obviously the point is, too, you want to have better care for your elders, just like, just like the children. I mean, you're not necessarily going to prevent deaths, but there's a quality, obviously, a quality of life that you need to, need to maintain. And, and so I think it's been a benefit, and we're going to move in that direction here.
Maybe next year's report will have.
I will include that.
A paragraph of what, what we learned from that.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. We have an elder abuse team in Grand Traverse County, and I'm not sure if you do in Leland County, and it's, it's prior to death, so it's trying to prevent bad situations. But I thought that might be a good place for us to start, too, and then we can.
We could talk to them.
Check with counterparts in Leland County and see what, what you have. Are you aware of anything like that?
No.
But it was just within the last month, I think I sent a note to you and said, we need to start elder death review because it was an investigator called who was concerned about the conditions where somebody was living and he, you know, and we talked through it and I said, you know, that was clearly self-neglect, which is really difficult to address if somebody has their wits about them and they say, I don't want your help get out, even though the conditions are deplorable, there's nothing that can be done and he, you know, but I said, and that's one of the things that I've learned from elder death, you know, this differentiating between self-neglect versus caretaker neglect.
Commissioner?
One other observation here was, I don't know, we had two court order death certificates for bodies that couldn't be located. Was that just a statistical fluke or is it?
No, I think it may have happened.
Not a fluke, but it's not typical.
Yeah, that's not typical. I mean, I think it's real that it happened, but it is not typical, right? And we always, when we get those court orders, we actually do an investigation ourselves because I had one time where I received a court order to issue a death certificate on somebody who the family hadn't seen him in years and they were sure they were dead. And so, I handed it over to my investigator and I said, could you just check into this a little bit? We had the guy on the phone and within about 30 minutes and so, he said, and he was living in California and he said, you know, have you called home lately? And he said, well, it's been a while. And he said, well, it has been eight years, your parents just had you declared dead. He said, oh, I really do need to call them more. But, so it was like kind of a happy thing in our office because he was alive, you know?
It just jumped out at me.
Yeah, that is odd. It is odd that that number is odd.
For a county your size, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
There's still dialogue on regional board. I know you work in Grand Travers County, you've got some surveys. We had a meeting of ten or how many counties were there?
I think there was about 15 there.
So, that's still working behind scenes.
Yeah, we have had large turnover of our commissioners in Grand Travers County, so we need to do some re-education, but Chet and Nate Elder, our administrator, and I have met a few times.
There seems to be interest on other counties.
I think it would be wise. I still think it would be to have a regional center here.
Well, thank you. We have more about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Very kind of sense of...
Thank you.
Sorry about the traffic.
Yeah.
It's the Grand Travers County.
You're doing good for everything. All right, then that brings us to the audit. And our favorite auditor is here today.
Following up the medical examiner, that's a tough one to follow.
Said five minutes is all he needed for tonight? Well, that's what questions, three plus questions.
All right, well, thank you for having me back. My name is Steve Peacock. I am a partner at Raymond to talk about the audit for Lelandon County for June 30th, I'm sorry, December 31st, 2018. And to start off my comments, big news, I'm now back a legal resident of the county of Lelandon after a 16-year departure to our friends from the South. So, I'm now a resident of this fine county and I couldn't be happier.
Welcome back.
Well, we get a discount next year.
I'll talk about that. That's right, let's travel time. Okay, I believe that you have circulated the bound copy of the financial statements as well as a letter that looks something like this. Want to change things up a little bit, we're going to start with this letter, if we could. This is an independent auditor's communication with those charged with governance, which is this board, and this is essentially a conclusionary memorandum as it relates to the audit. So, everybody in the room is available or capable of reading this, but I'll just talk about the highlights, okay? We were engaged to audit the December 31st, 2018 financial statements for Lelandon County. Under the caption, "Our responsibility in relation to the financial statements," we issued an engagement letter on January 25th, 2019, that said we were going to perform certain procedures over the accounting records. I'm here to tell you we have concluded on that and we have issued the report, okay? Under plan, scope, and timing of the audit, internally, we have several different planning meetings and we have all those benchmarks that we laid out in our internal planning meeting, meetings were met and we did not have to modify any of our planning documentation. Onto page two, compliance with all ethic requirements regarding independence. Myself and all members on the engagement team have complied with the profession's independence and all other ethical requirements related to the profession. Under qualitative aspects of the county's significant accounting practices, when we get into the financial statements, the first footnote has all of your accounting policies. So, this just basically tells the reader there were no material changes this year, so your accounting policies that you've used in prior years have remained the same in Under significant accounting estimates, about halfway through the page, you'll see three bullet points towards the bottom. These are the three significant estimates that are embedded in the financial statements. Number one is the estimated useful life of depreciational capital assets. This may be on your books for a 15-year life, it could last 20, it could last six. So, those estimates are embedded in the financials. Management's estimate of the accrued compensated abstances is based on current hourly rates. So, if you've accrued vacation time at December 31st, 2018, it's accrued at your current rate that you're earning at the end of the year. If you don't take that PTO until five years from now, that could be at a higher rate. So, that estimate is embedded in there. And then finally, insurance claims incurred but not yet reported are always based on an estimate that we follow up with your insurance carriers to see if there's anything material that should be pushed back to the prior year. But there are still some estimates with respect to that. So, we've evaluated all those assumptions made and we are comfortable with those estimates that are embedded in the statements. Onto page three, under significant difficulties, there were none. Uncorrected and corrected misstatements, there were none. Disagreements with management, there were none. Representations requested by management. The last five or six pages of this document is a letter that management from the county signs and it basically tells the audit firm that everything we've requested is accurate and honest to the best of knowledge and belief that we provided it for us. To our, under management's consultations and other accountants, we are not aware of any. We will have significant matters, findings or issues, we'll talk about the findings here shortly. Under other information and documents containing audited financial statements, there are items in this bound report that are not subject to the audit standards. And when we get into it, I'll talk to you about what those are. And then the top of page four, the last commentary, is there are some brief descriptions of the upcoming changes in accounting standards and those are in attachment A, the two-page attachment, A and B. Please know as a board that as new accounting pronouncements are coming out, we will work with management for the adoption of those and help them to comply with such accounting. Okay, any questions as it relates to our communication with auditors on the letter? Did you guys not have that with them? Did you guys just get it? Okay, sorry, that was mine. I thought you guys had that, sorry.
We do now.
Okay, now to the good stuff. Now, we'll talk about the bound financial statements. Yours is probably half as thick as mine because I'm on one page and yours should be on facing pages. So, this is the annual report that is submitted to the state of Michigan and has been submitted and accepted by the state of Michigan already. So, this has already been uploaded to the state and we've received confirmation from the state that you are complying, okay? I can direct your attention to page number one, under independent auditor's report. That is the first letterhead page in this document. Report on the financial statements, December 31st, 2018, as we talked about, these are the statements for 2018. Under management's responsibility for the financial statements, these statements do not belong to Raymond, they belong to the management of the county, okay? The next several paragraphs talk about our responsibility as auditors. So, the first paragraph talks about the road commission. So, the road commission is a component unit of the county and that's audited by a different firm. So, this table in the middle of page one, Lelandon County Road Commission represents 99% of the total assets of your component units, 100% of your total net position, and 98% of total revenues. So, when we get into the component unit section, I'll show you what that means and what that doesn't mean, but that just tells the reader that there is a delineation of audit responsibility between us and the road commission auditor, okay?
Questions?
Yes?
Go ahead.
I think we've talked about this before. Are there disadvantages to having the road commission have a different auditing firm or are there advantages or should we be?
Usually in our, in our practice of governments, the counties and the road commissions go together. This is, this is just different and there's usually a cost savings that will go along if you incorporate both audits under one contract. I think you saw that in our last RFP, we gave a pricing discount if both audits were included.
And that's a decision the road commission makes?
Uh, yep. I mean, you guys are the primary government, you exercise a significant level of influence with them being the component unit. I think you would have some authority if you wanted to change it, you would have the ability to wish to do that.
It just seems like in future years, we ought to look at that.
So, we used to pay for every other year, the audit, so are we not doing that anymore?
We still do that.
We're still paying every other year.
We're giving some communication here as movement, they'd like to see it, Martin system with us every year.
Oh, good, okay.
Road commission, last I knew, they changed, well, they proposed, they went up to RFP every year, which in our world is odd, it's very odd. You don't get the price breaks of multi-year contracts and it can be a burden on the staff as far as constantly having a different revolving door of auditors. So, that's one thing that is odd about how that operates. Any other questions? Okay, so remember that the road commission, all their numbers in here are based on the audit from the other firm. Top of page two, there's a brief definition of what the auditors do, but if you go to that next sentence, the next paragraph, "We believe that the audit evidence we have obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our audit opinions." So, we've got enough evidential matter, we've done control testing, we are now in position to sign the opinion. So, the opinion is the next paragraph, not going to read that to you, but that is an unmodified or clean opinion and that's the highest level of assurance that audit firms can place on financial statement. So, that's a big gold star for Lelandon County, okay? Under the restatement paragraph, there were some funds prior year that were recorded as special revenue funds that were moved to the enterprise fund classification. So, there were some classifications between year to year. This footnote just tells them, if a reader's looking at last year's statements, they'll see, so, whoa, why don't these numbers roll forward? Well, here's the reason why, there were funds that were recategorized. Under required supplementary information, there are two sections of information that are not audited in this document. Number one is the MDNA, which is the management's discussion and analysis. It's about an eight-page document that follows the report, so that is not audited by the audit firm, but we do read it to make sure it's consistent with the financial statements taken as a whole. So, we do look at it, we don't just blindly pass on it, we make sure it's consistent. The second piece of information that's in here is after the footnotes, there are, there's a bunch of statistical information as it relates to your pension plans and those come from the MERS annual reports. They are not audited by this audit firm, but they're required to be reported in your annual report. So, we just take that information from MERS and transcribe it into this, okay? Top of page three, other information. Does anybody remember when audit reports were one-page? Top of page three, other information, there are several combining financial statements that appear after the footnotes. They are the minutia, the very small funds that we aggregate on the facing statements, but there may be 22 funds that roll up to one column in the audit report, but the 22 funds are laid out in these funds, in these financial statements after the footnotes. This tells you the reader, A, what they are, and the second paragraph, last sentence, says, "In our opinion, the combining and individual fund statements are fairly stated in all material respects as it relates to the financial statements taken as a whole." So, those, the opinion does cover those and they are all fairly stated. The last paragraph talks about the independent auditor's report under governmental auditing standards and we will get to that. That's another audit report that's at the very end of the document.
This, this person that signed this, this very nice handwriting, is that a man or a woman?
Here's the irony in that, Mr. Bunnick. This is our former CFO who used to work for us. He's been out of the firm for 10 years and it was Dennis Boyson out, it was a man, yep. So, he retired from us, but we liked his calligraphy, so we've used that signature.
He just signs at Raymond Robson, so he used the business?
Yep. He was, he's not anymore, he retired. He's out of this, out of the show.
The signature still counts.
Yep. So, moving through the document here, beginning on page five through to page 13 is the management's discussion and analysis. I generally do not comment on that because that's unaudited information. So, let's go over to page 16. This is your statement of net position. This has all of your assets and liabilities in a full accrual-type mode, so this has everything. This is all your assets, all your liabilities. Far right-hand side, component units. Remember, we talked about the road commission, that represents about 98 to 99% of all those numbers over there are the road commission. The other ones are Land Bank and Brownfield, which are pretty doggone small, but we'll get to those. I'm not going to talk about component units because that's the majority of the road commission. So, let's start talking from the total column. Total assets for the county, the first subtotal, $53.8 million comprised principally of cash and investments, receivables due to the government, and capital assets being depreciated and those not being depreciated. The next subtotal is your deferred outflows of resources and those are principally payments for the pension. Under liabilities, total liabilities of $20,204,247, sorry, consisting primarily of your long-term debt of 11.7 and then the 1.6 that is due within the next 12 months.
Jail?
Pardon me?
The jail?
The jail?
Is that the jail?
Yes, yeah, so, there's all, we'll get to the footnote that talks about all the different bonds. And that pension liability, that $5.8 million number, we're going to spend some time talking about that because that went up this year and we'll talk about why as we get towards the footnotes. Deferred inflows of resources, those would be taxes that you have levied for the following year that you have collected prior to year-end. And then there's some pension numbers in there as well. So, the ending result is net position, which is essentially assets minus liabilities. And you've got $15 million of your net assets invested in capital assets, you've got $362,000 restricted for capital projects, $4 million are restricted for state mandated programs, and the big number here is a $14.7 million of unrestricted net position and that is a very healthy county. So, this county is extraordinarily healthy.
So, so...
Go ahead.
Quickly, what is our capital project that we restricted 361,400?
That would be...
Are we going to get to that?
We will get to that, uh, let's see here.
It's not the jail, it isn't.
We did not break that out in footnote 14. Michelle, do you remember what that is? I do not recall what that is.
We have a capital project set as restricted.
$362,000 of restricted money.
Yeah, I, um...
Okay.
I'm just guessing here, doesn't that proceed from a little property sale?
No.
No?
This would be, it could be Matt's software that he purchased after year-end. There was a $35,000 purchase for equipment, maybe something like that. It's not the roof or anything like that.
Nothing was portioned out through until this year.
Okay.
Would you like me to follow up or Jen, do you want to follow up on that?
Either way.
We can follow up on that.
Okay. I could have brought my computer here and could have pulled up all the work papers. Any other questions on the, this is balance sheet number one for the county. There are two balance sheets, so we'll get to those in just a moment. On page 17 and 18 is income statement number one. So, this shows your revenues and expenses for the county as a whole. Again, this is consolidating all your activities. Starts out with expenses. The primary government double underscored, two-thirds of the way down. We'll talk about those numbers first because the component units, the next three line items, they're all very, very small and we've got Brownfield and Land Bank in a different schedule we'll talk about. So, expenses of $16.7 million, that's the expense to operate the county. Program revenues across the next three captions or columns, you've got charges for services of $3.7 million, you've got operating grants and contributions of $1,200,000, and then you've got capital grants of $31,650, far right-hand column, under net expense, was a net expense burn of $11,840,000. That's before you apply any property taxes. So, now you roll over to the next page.
That's not in the red, then?
Nope, nope. So, those numbers all carry over to the top here and then you apply general revenues. Property taxes of $10.9 million, grants and contributions not restricted for specific programs, investment earnings, gains on capital gain transactions, for a total general revenue of $11,300,000. for a total general revenue of $11,300,000. And then you'll see the change in net position, $544,603. That would be akin to a net loss if this were a for-profit financial statement. Okay? So your net position decreased by just over half a million dollars. It doesn't cause me any concern, because you have years where you're high and years where you give back a little bit. So with $34 million of net position, $500,000 does not cause me any anxiety. Okay? So you've now seen income statement and balance sheets number one. Now, when you go to page 20, this is balance sheet number two. This might be what you are more used to seeing when you look at financial reports for the county. These are the fund statements. So I talked specifically from the general fund column. Two things you will notice that are not in here are fixed assets or long-term debt. Those are on the full accrual balance sheet and not on the fund statements. That's, don't ask me why, these are the governmental accounting gods, and this is the way they say to do it, so we have to comply. Total assets for the general fund, $10,055,000, consisting almost of vast majority in cash and investments. Got a little bit of receivables in there, some prepaid items, and then you have an advance to another component unit. Liabilities, trade accounts payable of $132,000, accrued liabilities $131, some unearned revenue or deferred revenue for $6,500. Total liabilities of $269,000. You collected some property taxes in advance, $322. And then you get down to the second line from the bottom, total fund balance of $9.5 million. So one of the barometers that is used to say, okay, is the county healthy or not? Fund balance is a big indicator, okay? Like to have 30%, 30 to 35% of revenues in fund balance. So now, if you go to page 22, total revenues for the general fund, first subtotal under the general fund heading, $12.2 million. You certainly are well-reserving your fund balance at $9.5 million. So you have plenty of fund balance. Yes, sir?
Before you leave page 20, do you look at the Village of Northport sewer debt retirement? Does, does utility authority submit paperwork?
Oh, yes.
You're comfortable with all that?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Everything in here that, with the exception of the Road Commission, has been audited.
Thank you.
Some more extensively than others, you know, we're going to, we have funds that we spend more time in. If we think there's any concern, we'll spend more time in those. And then we have a rotation of funds we'll go through. We don't audit every fund in detail every year, we rotate those funds through the, what the auditing standards tell us to do. Okay, so back to 20, where we were from the balance sheet. On page 21, this is a reconciliation between the two balance sheets. So essentially what this does, this is a very elaborate cash-to-accrual adjustment. So on your general fund, you don't see any fixed assets or long-term debt. This adds it all back and gets the balance sheet tied, the general fund balance sheet, tied back to the statement of net position. So once we know we're in reconciliation here, we're in pretty good, pretty good shape. We know the two balance sheets are in balance, and it works. Okay? So, we've covered 21, we have now on page 22. This is income statement number two, for the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Again, we talked about from the general fund column. $12.2 million in total revenues, principally property taxes, intergovernmental charges, and so forth. Expenditures of $13.1 million. And you'll see the sprinkling of that between legislative, general government, judicial, public safety, et cetera. Revenues under expenditures of $901,000. And then, as all county governments and just about any government that's out there, there are transfers in among funds. So the total transfers in were $1,884,000. And they transferred out $568,000 for a net financing source of $1,316,000. So the net change in fund balance for the general fund of $416,000 is akin to a net income on a cash basis, added to your fund balance at the beginning of the year, and you get to $9,463,000. Okay?
So, pretty consistent with what we've been rolling over a year.
Yep, yep, yep. So now, when you go to page 23, this looks similar to what we saw in 21. 21 was the reconciliation of the balance sheets. 23 is your reconciliation of the income statements. Similar theory applies here on 23. This is going to have the fixed assets, the long-term debt, et cetera. Pages 24 through 26. This is your comparison of the general fund behavior according, or compared to budget. So your original budget is in the first column. You amended budgets periodically throughout the year. Your final budget at June 30, I'm sorry, December 31st 18 is listed in the final budget column. The actual fund performance is there in the next column, and over and under on the right. Were I in your chair, here's what I want to pay attention to. Under the expenditures, regardless of the caption on the left, what you want on the right is you want all these numbers to be brackets, which means that management has not over-expended what you have approved. Okay? So when you flip through 24, you're all good down there. 25, all your numbers here are good. And then page 26, same situation, so you guys are in good shape. And you're going to get a gold star in footnote number two that talks about the fact that the county did not expend any money over what it was appropriated.
So...
Yes.
I mean, okay. So what this is saying is that our accounting department did a bang-up job of getting all those amendments and transfers done, okay?
Exactly. We have governmental units that have several pages of violations as it relates to this stuff. And the state of Michigan can lose their sense of humor if they see the management acting differently than what the board's telling them to act. So you guys are in good shape with respect to that, so hats off to the accounting folks and to the board as well, because you're amending the budgets. So you guys are working kind of in lockstep to make sure this doesn't come out smelling. Okay, on to page 27. There's no set of balance sheets, this is for the proprietary funds, which are funds that look, act, and smell like business units. So you've got, the biggest one here is going to be your unpledged delinquent tax revolving fund. This is going to be 90 to 95% of the activity of these classifications of funds. So let's go over to the total column, second column from the right. Total assets of these funds of $7,903,000. And that is consisting primarily of cash and cash investments, as well as delinquent tax receivable. So... Under liabilities, $299,578. You've got 212 due to other governments, some compensated absences, accrued payable, and accrued liabilities, total, total 299. Your unrestricted portion of this, this fund type is $7,603,000. Again, another very positive, healthy fund balance. Page 28 is the income statement for the proprietary funds. This is also going to have the same headings as the previous page, we'll talk from the total column. Operating revenues of $1,453,000. Operating expenses of $897,000. $556,000 of an operating income. Then you have some other non-operating revenues of $59,260, which is investment income. Income before transfers of $616,000. And you transferred out from these funds in total, $1,129,000 to the various funds within the county. Overall, change in net position of about a half a million dollars. Doesn't cause me problems, that was, you transferred the money out, so the board knew when the transfers were authorized that that was, that this is what was going to happen. So we are, we're okay with this. If you transferred funds and put those funds into a deficit, that would be a different discussion. Right now, you are operating completely within the order of governmental accounting. So just to confuse everybody a little more, on page 29 and 30 are the cash flow statements. One might ask, why aren't there cash flow statements in the government's statements? Because they're not required. The only funds that are required to have cash flow statements are proprietary funds. So this fund, this statement, what it tells you is what happened to cash. You opened up with a cash balance of X, and these numbers here tell you what happened. Let's talk from the total column. Net cash provided by operating activities. So for the year, these three funds created $553,000 of cash for the county. Now, what did you do with that cash? You transferred out $1,128,000. And then you had $59,260 in investment earnings. So your cash position went down by $507,000. So that's just about what your, your change in net position was, 513. Your change in cash was 516. So that's walking in lockstep, and what we would expect. Page 30 is a, is a deeper dive into the first third of the statement on page 29. I'm not going to go into much on that. On page 31, this is your agency fund. Agency funds are funds that are established for units of government that hold money for another entity. So for example, you've got $616,000 of cash in the till. Well, you owe $553,000 to other governmental units. You have undistributed collections of $19,571. You've got some sundry liabilities of $44,037. There is no fund balance in agency funds, because what you have in cash is owed to somebody else. Those sides of the ledgers balance out, and we're done. Okay? Page 32 and 33, these are the last two statements in the boundary report, formal statements, if you will. But these are the component units. So we talked about earlier the Road Commission, that first column. Those numbers come from the Road Commission audit. We audited Brownfield, and we audited Land Bank. So if you look in there, total assets respectively between Brownfield and Land Bank, $232,000. For Brownfield, $149,000. For Land Bank, there's cash and a little bit of land held for sale in those two respective funds. Moving down to the total liabilities, accounts payable and accrued liabilities, some unearned revenue, and then there's a $100,000 advance to Brownfield from the general fund. And then you've got some long-term debt of about $386,000. Total liabilities, $519 for Brownfield, $1,500 for Land Bank. And then you get into the net position. Overall, Land Bank, I'm sorry, Brownfield has a net deficit of $286,000. And Land Bank has a positive fund balance of $148,000. Yes?
What, how about that?
Yeah, Brownfield needs to either have some more capital infused by a different fund, or they need to be getting out of that deficit situation. I would expect that the state will send a letter to the county asking them to get that deficit, what the plan is going to be to get that resolved.
Will this be a material finding?
No. So, if you go to page 33, this is where you could earn out of that deficit. So if you go, this is going to have the revenues and expenses. Brownfield at $153,675. You've either got to increase that revenue stream or decrease the expense side to get this fund deficit earned out. So if you go down to Brownfield column, $154,000 in revenues, I'm sorry, expenses. You've got program revenues, which is the next column, $125,000, next row, I'm sorry, $125,000. You had a net expense, your, your net expenses in excess of revenue by $28,000. So you see that what's going on here is, through operations, you're reducing your fund balance. Then you apply your property tax revenue of $33,581. So unrestricted investment earnings, you've got general revenues of $36,149. Your overall change in net position increased by $7,400. So it's shifting away at that deficit. But at $7,000 a year, it's going to be a long time before that goes away.
So, do I make two questions? So one, are we paying for some EPA loans out of, is that what some of this is? We're still paying back EPA loans?
The EPA loans are not in, yeah, well, yes, they are, yep, yep. That's correct.
And, pretty soon, maybe some tip dollars will start kicking in, and...
Yep.
Okay.
Right.
That's way back, right?
That was when the Leona property was first being demolished, I believe, that was.
Right.
Just when the $100,000...
Several years ago.
Is that correct, Jen?
Yes.
And assuming those, those lots have been sold, there should be additional tough money coming in here. Because remember, we just sold that property a year and a half ago or so.
Well, that's, it just hasn't cleared yet, so that's why...
Well, it takes off with the taxes to raise, so at some point, we will be seeing revenue coming in at a much higher rate.
Right.
What they build on.
Which they build, yeah. They sold it, they buy, they're, they had to deal with it so many years. It's on part of the beat. So it should be having money coming in here. I mean, we were expecting this, this is not as...
That's our plan.
Correct, that's the plan.
The lot's haven't sold.
That is the plan, yes.
Yeah, send a letter with that, to the state.
Okay, so then, Land Bank Authority, pretty nominal amounts of money rolling through here. Third line from the bottom, you had an increase in net position in Land Bank by $11,679. Total net position of $148,000 for Land Bank. Okay, that, that is the formal financial statements, those are the ones that are covered by the opinion. Are there any questions with respect to those? Okay, hearing none? I will go over to the footnotes, beginning on page 36. 36 to 64 are the footnotes. I'll just go over them very briefly. These are the same footnote compositions we've had in previous years, there's no new accounting standards. So this is going to look relatively consistent to you, the readers who have seen those in the past. Okay? Footnote number one talks about your summary of significant accounting policies. It defines the reporting unit. It talks about your component units, the Road Commission, the Brownfield, Land Bank. Talks on the next page on 37 about your regional joint operations with Benzil and Health Department, the Road, or the Airport Commission, and then the District, District Court, and Circuit Courts. On middle of page 37, the theory behind having two balance sheets and two income statements is described in this footnote. And if you want to have, if you want to read about why there are two separate balance sheets and income statements, that carries all the way over to the, two-thirds of the way down of page 38. Your measurement focus, your basis of accounting and financial statement presentation, described there at the bottom of 38. All the way to the middle of page 39. What happens where it talks about assets, deferred outflows, liabilities, deferred inflows, and equity. These are accounting policies related to those bold items here. So deposits and investments, here's your accounting policy. So you roll over to the next line, the next page. Receivables and payables, there's your accounting policies. Prepaid items, capital assets, round out page 40. 41, assets held for resale, deferred outflows, compensated absences, long-term obligations. Deferred inflows are described in 41. The county's policies as it relates to fund equity are in 42. Top of page 42, inter-fund transactions are described at the bottom of page 42. 43, pensions, the brief, very brief discussion on pensions at the top of page 43. And then the use of estimates round out your accounting policies. Footnote number two is the next gold star. If you look at this, this talks about your theory and your processes used for budgeting. You go to the last paragraph, Public Act 621 and 78, provides that a local unit shall not incur expenses, expenditures in excess of the amount budgeted during the year ended December 31st 18. The county had no expenditures in budgetary funds which were in excess of the amounts budgeted. We don't get to write that a lot, so that's fun when we get to write that. So congratulations on that.
Good job, accountant.
Yes, absolutely. Page 43 at the bottom, deposits and investments. Now, that just goes into the nuts and bolts of what the numbers are comprised of. We've already talked about the accounting policies.
Go ahead, right in my...
But deposits and what they are comprised of, cash and investments, component unit, to the component unit and the primary governments. Top of page 44, talks about how it's broken out in the financial statements between cash on hand, checking and savings accounts, certificates of deposits and investments. The bottom of page 44 has the description of the investments that are held by the county. Their fair value, their ratings, and their maturities. Continuing on page 45, we talk about things such as credit risk, interest rate risk, concentrations of credit risk, none of which were of concern to the audit firm at this point. Fair value measurements, this talks about the liquidity of your investments. So level one would be like a cash position. You can go in and grab it today and go spend it on whatever you need. Level two, a little less liquid, but you can still liquidate it and use the cash if you had to. Level three are things such as, you know, hedge... Level three are things such as, you know, hedge funds that have ninety-day redemption periods. So you can call the hedge fund, I need a million dollars. Well, you've got to wait ninety days to get it. You don't have any of those. You're in level two, which is completely safe and appropriate for where you're at as a government. Yes, sir?
The previous discussion in regards to our accounts and how much we have covered by FDIC, is that typical for most counties to be like us, not worrying about having every account under that limit?
Yes, yes, it is, especially where you're, you're in a period where you're collecting a lot of tax, so your cash balances build. They can exceed the FDIC limits. If we had the same discussion in two thousand and eight, I would have had a, I would have a different answer for you. A lot of bank failures in eight and nine, if you recall. The safety and soundness of financial institutions that you're in today, I believe that risk is very minimal.
So you do look at that, where we have our money, and that's not, you do not have a level of discomfort?
That is correct. In many cases, we will look at depository institutions that our clients are in, and we will use resources. There's a good rating agency called Bankrate dot com that talks about banks and their liquidity and their capital ratios and, you know, if they're safe and, safe and sound. If we don't know an institution, we're going to certainly check it out as your depository to make sure it's safe. Most of the banks, most of our larger clients don't invest in oddball little banks and stuff that has not been around for a while.
So looking at the ratings are all extremely good. So I'm guessing there's no sweep, sweep accounts anymore?
No, these are, these are, these are specific investments that you've, this could be commercial paper, this can be bonds, these could be, they're not equities, but they would be specifically, like Fannie Mae, federal home loan, those are like bonds. Essentially, those are bonds.
So our cash could be in sweep accounts, but I don't think it is anymore.
Correct. So if you go, well, go back to your question earlier, Mr. Ansorgi. Middle of page forty-four, under custodial credit risk for deposits. Custodial credit risk is a risk, a risk that in the event of a bank failure, the county's deposits may not be returned. State law does not require, and the county does not have a policy for deposit custodial credit risk. At the end of the year, twelve million, thirty-one thousand of the combined bank balance of thirteen point nine was exposed to custodial credit risk because it was uninsured or uncollateralized. So there's your number that was uncollateralized, and if we were, if we had a concern that what bank it's in is at risk, we would have a whole different discussion in this footnote, and we would have talked long before now if a potential adjustment was necessary. Any questions on the deposits and investments? We'll be through to page forty-six. So brief table that talks about your receivables and payables, in governmental and business-type activities, what they are, they come from accounts payable, loans, loans receivable, taxes, leases, et cetera. So that kind of gives a little deep, a deeper dive into your receivable balances. Onto page forty-seven at the top is your accounts payable, so that's the other side of the ledger, trade accounts payable, accrued liabilities, accrued interest, and due to other governments. Your funds that have been transferred among your different operating funds is footnote number six on page forty-seven. You'll see those different transfers in and out, and there's your advance to the Brownfield is in the middle of page forty-seven. Forty-eight are your capital assets, footnote number seven. This is a roll forward of all your capital assets from the beginning of the year. Assets placed in service during the year are the additions. Disposals that were made are the next column, and any transfers which there were none. Get to your ending balance of your total capital assets of the county. Top of page forty-nine shows the distribution of depreciation expense. A big chunk of that, the biggest chunk is in public safety, which is as expected. That's where a lot of your capital assets are. General government, four-thirty-two, public safety, six-hundred-and-thirty-five, and then a smattering of the other ones there, round that out to a million, three-eighty-nine of total depreciation expense. Next table is a table that comes from the road commission, so I'm not going to talk about that, but that's the road commission fixed assets. Getting into page fifty, this is your long-term debt. So this is going to be borrowings that the county is on the hook for. With each one of them in a similar format as the previous footnote, opening balance, any additional borrowings you had, any payments made, and then an ending balance at the end of the year, and then we're required to report what's due within one year. So total, this would be the second line from the bottom, total obligations of the county, thirteen point four million dollars, of which a million, six-twenty-nine is due within the next twelve months. The county is pretty low balances and borrowed debt. So let's just say you were going to go down on capital projects, if you're going to buy something or build something. You have a couple of options. This county has a couple of options. You can borrow, or you can use fund balance, you can use some combination of both. Lease purchase agreements are available. Some of our governmental clients have borrowing so high that the only thing they can use is fund balance. You guys have options. You guys can use fund balance or you could use debt. So if you're going to go buy, build a brand-new jail, spend ten million bucks on a new jail, you could borrow some of that, use some of your fund balance, or any combination of the two. So you've got options if you're, if you're looking at making any kind of a big capital acquisition.
This is what we talked about if you choose to go forward with the HVAC project. This is one option. Steve talked to Michelle, Jen, and I, John, Joe.
But this, the thirteen million is Northport.
Correct.
So technically, we're backing those bonds, but they're not ours.
Correct.
So we just have the law enforcement center, maybe half paid off.
It was five point three-six million, you're down to three point six. You paid two million bucks, yeah, million eight.
And then radio system, the nine-one-one radios, at least, so we're making payments. That'll be paid off in a few years.
Two thousand and twenty-six, yep. And then you were asking earlier, Commissioner Launer, about the EPA stuff. That's on fifty-one. So there's your Brownfield obligation that's due for the Brownfield Development Authority. Again, relatively low bonded debt for what you see in a normal county population.
Yeah, ours is only six, a little over six.
Right. Yeah, you are correct, but when you look at the primary government, if Northport Seward defaults, you still got to pay the. Yeah, I get where you're going, yep. Middle of page fifty-one, we're required to disclose to the reader the next five years of principal and interest, and then we can do increments of five-year buckets after that. So that's why you see principles of a million, two to a million, three. Then you got that big six-million-dollar number, that's an aggregate of five years. So by two thousand and twenty-eight, that will be paid off. There's your interest expense to the next column over, and then your component unit, that's going to be your road commission, I'm sorry, that is your Brownfield, and you've got a payment schedule as it relates to that. Okay, we're almost done. Page fifty-two, risk management. Every county, every unit of government, every municipal, every business has risk to manage. This is a brief discussion about how the county manages its, its risk portfolio. Suffice it to say, we were not concerned about how the county manages risk. We didn't have to record any liabilities we thought you had exposure for, but this is what the policy is, and this is how the county manages risk. The very bottom, you've got the self-insurance for workers' comp, so you'll see the estimated liability, claims incurred, claims paid. Last year, you ended the year at thirty-five-hundred. This year, you've got thirty-eight thousand, eight-eleven. Moving out to the top of page fifty-three, the catch-all under contingent liabilities talks about potential lawsuits. We inquire a view of the county attorneys, we talk to the clerk, we talk to everybody. Do we think there's an obligation for a lawsuit? At this point, the answer is no. But it can happen. Everybody knows that you can be sued for anything at a moment's notice. Continuing your property tax policies are in footnote number eleven, page fifty-three. And then pension funds, this is a very long disclosure, and this goes all the way until So this is, this is eight pages right now. There's a lot of definition in here as far as what the pension plan is, what the actuary use for actuarial assumptions. There's just a couple takeaways I want to talk about with your pension fund, and it's not in this footnote. So there's a table we'll talk about. So if I were in your chair, what's important to me, and we'll talk about that. But this is the definition of the plan, how many people are in it, what's open, what's closed, your actuarial analysis. If you go to page fifty-six, this is kind of where the rubber hits the road. Table at the top, balances beginning in December thirty-first, seventeen, far right-hand column, their pension liability at the end of last year was three point seven million dollars. All sorts of things happened throughout the year, service costs, interest, actuarial differences, employer contributions, employee contributions, get a million-dollar loss in the investment portfolio. All the way down to the very bottom line there, balances at December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, your pension liability went up two point one million dollars. A million of that was a loss in the investment portfolio. So when you see that, your pension liability overall as a county, as it relates to your total assets is pretty low. And the adoption of sixty-eight, Gatsby sixty-eight, did not cripple this county like other counties that had it adopted. It blew all of their net assets out. They were all gone, and they ended up in a deficit. Leelonne County didn't have that problem, okay? But I'd still be mindful that this number, as it grows, is something that you need to manage. Now, the county pays additional monies into the, into the plan every year, which is, which is great, but keep working away getting this thing.
Went the wrong way.
It went the wrong way this year.
So the other half, some retirements?
It could have been, actuarial assumptions could have been changed, payments that were made out of the plan that were paid to beneficiaries. So plan assets go down, the liability stays the same. So it's a combination of several items that led to this number. And what, what you want to make, pay attention to, a couple of things here. The next table in the middle here, the actuary uses all sorts of discount rates to try to figure out what this liability is. MERS in your plan is eight percent. So that five point eight million dollar number, you've seen that middle column there, that ties to the table above. Look what happens if you have a one percent increase or a one percent decrease in this discount. So you go from five point eight million to nine million dollars if that discount rate goes down a point. Likewise, if it goes up a point, it really helps you out, takes down to three point one. The likeliness of this staying at eight, I think, is pretty low. I think MERS is starting to drop this discount rate. But remember, every quarter point or half a point or one point that goes down, what happens to your liability? It shoots up.
I think you just told us this a month or two ago, right, that MERS, chat was, did you hear that? Yeah, you were telling us that the discount.
Yes, I think it'll be seven point five.
Seven point five or seven point seven-five?
I heard it's going to be seven, I heard, it wasn't seven point seven-five, and they thinking about reducing it to seven point seven.
So that's good, this is going to go up if that happens.
But if we go back, like up to fifty-four, you know, we're sitting pretty good with, like, our employee contribution rates, and if we can continue to pay. Well, we always will, though. If we want to say we're, we're at and ahead of being, not being, we're always going to have to.
Well, and.
We've got a lot of retirements coming up.
Of, of all the discussion that we have with respect to all these numbers in here, if we could just pause the discussion on this pension liability until we get through the footnotes, because there's a table we'll talk about in the back that's really important.
Steve, do you want to talk about OPEB liability?
Yes.
Because that's a good piece for many counties.
Oh, yes. So OPEB, which is the other post-employment benefits, that is primarily in the government industry, is healthcare. So for those who have retiree healthcare, that number is huge, okay? So Gatsby seventy-five came out, it's effective for this year, says you have to record, either Gatsby sixty-eight said all the pensions, Gatsby seventy-five says OPEB, okay? There are, you don't have any OPEB liabilities booked on the balance sheet of the county. So you're in a good spot that way. A lot of other counties don't have that. So they got hit hard when sixty-eight was adopted, they're getting hard, hit hard again this year with Gatsby seventy-five. It's going to be over at seventy-five. There's nothing else on the horizon in Gatsby to find any more liabilities to put on the balance sheet. So I think they're done beating up the balance sheet, okay?
Do Travis City Public Schools have to fall under Gatsby?
Yes.
So their OPEB has got to be outrageous.
MERS systems are bad, but MITSERS is way worse.
And OPEB for many counties is going to be a major issue as they do long-term planning. Steve can tell you, for many counties, people have been focusing on MERS, not worrying about OPEB liability. And so this has been quite a shot for commissioners, especially new ones, when they start getting into their talks with their accountants, and they're being told, well, your OPEB liability may, some counties actually exceed their MERS because they've been focusing on MERS, not focusing on OPEB.
And then the context of OPEB versus pensions is there's not a person in this room that can tell you what healthcare costs, how much they're going to go up year over year over year. You might say five, you might say eight, you might say nine, I might say twelve. And in any situation, we can all be right. So the volatility in healthcare costs and the OPEB numbers are huge. Pensions are a little easier, more predictable, OPEB gets nuts with healthcare, so.
But once again, we are in a good position in. Well, I was just going to think, Chat and Michelle and Jen, they brought that to us. It was a tough bullet to bite, but it was a good one to do.
Absolutely. You are, you are a county of mine that, when I sit in front of the commissioners, I don't have to explain deficit net positions and go back to all the pension accounting because, yep, it hurt when you get, when you had to bite the bullet, but you had enough reserves to take that hit because of proper planning for several years ahead of time. And we try to educate our boards as we see these big accounting pronouncements come out, start planning, start planning, start planning, start planning, so when it hits, it's not the end of the world, so. Okay, working through fifty-eight is the exact same footnote disclosures as it relates to the road commission pension plan, so I'm not going to go into that. We'll end on page sixty-two. You have some leases for space on county-owned communication towers. This is the revenue, expected revenue rental, rental revenue for those tower leases for two thousand and nineteen up to twenty-three, million, six oh seven, and total revenue expected to be received over five years. Page sixty-three is footnote number fourteen. Gatsby fifty-four was adopted about nine years ago, requires a footnote disclosure, just showing a little bit more of a detail into your fund balance and what the restrictions are for and so forth. So that's what that is. Sixty-four, page sixty-four, footnotes fifteen and sixteen. Fifteen is your net investment in capital assets. Essentially, what that tells the reader, that you have twenty-one million dollars in the governmental activities of capital assets, and you have borrowed money against that, along with the receivable from Northport. So now you've got fifteen point six, fifteen million, one-hundred thousand of net investment in capital assets. Restatements, that talks about the moving the enterprise, the special revenue funds to enterprise funds, and it talks about what, how that changed on the, from the prior year report. Again, total fund balance didn't change, but the way it was sliced and diced is a little bit different. Any questions on the footnotes? Okay, we're in the home stretch. Page sixty-six, sixty-six, sixty-seven, and sixty-eight. This is the, this is where you want to spend time working on, looking at a pension. Page sixty-six, you see the columns fifteen through eighteen. Third line from the bottom shows your funded percentage of your pension. Fifteen, we're seventy-seven point four, sixteen, seventeen. 15, we're 77.4, 16, 78.2. Last year you jumped it up to 87 and this year you're 80.2. So liability went up, so it's a little bit more underfunded. So you're still better than most municipal units of government at 80, but I know you guys have always been ahead of the curve and you want to keep ratcheting that up. So if I'm in your chair, I'm watching that third line from the bottom, that's, that's telling you where your pension plan is. Page 67 is essentially the same data, but it's a little bit more condensed. Third column from the right, those are your funded percentages, the exact same number as you saw on the previous page. It's easier to see it more condensed, that was the way you'd see it on 67. 68, a takeaway on page 68 is in that table where it says contribution deficiency or excess. The actuary tells you how much you have to pay every year, so you have to make that, otherwise that's becomes, if it tells you to make a million, you make $600,000, you've got a $400,000 liability, you got to book on the balance sheet. You have never not paid what the actuary told you. In fact, in those four years that are described, in 2018, you paid $510,000 more, in '17, you paid $675,000, in '16, you paid $900,000, and in '15, you paid $997,000. So you are always contributing in excess to what the requirements are, keep it up. That's good. 69, 70 and 71 are the road commission and I do not talk about that. Okay, so that concludes the financial statements and footnotes proper. So now on pages 73 through 110, those are the small combining financial statements that in the past, I don't have much commentary on that because those numbers are very small and they roll up to the facing financial statements anyways, okay? So we'll end on pages 113. This is our final audit opinion and the final document in this report. So in the auditing world, you have generally accepted auditing standards, you have governmental auditing standards, and then you have a single audit. Single audits are only required for institutions that spend over $750,000 of federal dollars. The county's not there. You're in the middle row, you have to have a governmental auditing standard audit. It's also in the industry called a yellow book audit. This is your yellow book report. So go over to the top of page 14. Previously on page 13, this talks about what findings are. Material weakness is the most severe, a significant deficiency is the next, a control deficiency is the third, and an other matter is the fourth. So those are the levels of severity. Last sentence, top paragraph. We did identify certain deficiencies in internal control described in the accompanying schedule of findings and responses as items 2008, 1 and 2 that we consider to be material weaknesses. So we've got two weaknesses. Next paragraph under compliance and other matters, last sentence. The results of our tests disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported on a governmental audit standards, gold star. Responsibility from the audit firm to the county's response is defined in the next paragraph and then the final paragraph talks about the scope of delivery for this particular audit report. What you're probably most interested in, which most boards are, is the last two pages of this, which are the findings. Page 115, 2008-1, preparation of financial statements in accordance with GAAP. None of you are new commissioners, you've all seen that finding before and that's going to stay there.
Every year.
Yep, every year until the audit standards change.
We don't have an accountant on staff.
Correct. A licensed CPA, current with their continuing ed, yep. So this is not going to go away until the audit standards change, okay? The next one's a new one. And this relates to the fact that the Brownfield redevelopment authority's accounting records were not recorded for the year in 2018, okay? So if you look at the condition under the caption, nearly all transactions of the county's Brownfield redevelopment authority component unit for the year were recorded in the general ledger subsequent to year end, not during the year as the transactions were taking place. Additionally, bank reconciliations were not completed for the Brownfield cash accounts until several months after the end of the fiscal year, well after the six-week requirement is set forth by the state administration. So when we get done with this audit report, we have to file with the state what's called an ARP, which is an audit, APR, Audit Procedures Report. You guys don't see that, that's something the audit firm fills out. So we submit to the state and there's a series of questions and if you answer either yes or no, it should either be all yeses or all nos and I can't remember which way it goes. But one of the questions is, were the bank accounts reconciled within six weeks of month end? So that's a specific question the state asks. Most of the time, we like to say, yes, they are, but in this case, we couldn't say that. So that, the state is going to be, or the state has been notified, that you did not reconcile Brownfield records within the time allowed. Additionally, this finding says the accounting records were not updated until after fiscal year end. Under cause, the condition was due in part to employee turnover within the treasurer's office and an oversight in assigning individuals with the responsibility of preparing and reviewing the financial transactions as reported for the Brownfield authority in a timely manner. Under our recommendation, we've noted that management identified the issues. This was not something that was identified by us. They came, management came to us and told us what happened. We further noted that management is working to identify the individuals who will have the ongoing responsibility for the preparation of these accounting records. We recommend the management obtain and review financial information for the Brownfield on a monthly basis and promptly determine accounting responsibilities when employee turnover occurs. This has already been addressed and I do not believe this finding will be set forth next year. But this might cause the state a little correspondence with the county. They may leave it alone, they may leave it right at the, the way the findings were here, but you may get a correspondence from the state.
Well, just before you got there, my, the only thing I could think of and my guess was going to be turnover in the office. So you're saying it was turnover and oversight both, so.
That's correct.
So you're, they will report to you monthly?
No.
Us, Chat?
To Chat or Treasurer to Chat.
Yeah, we had an internal discussion with this, I think we have this already resolved. Do you agree with that?
Yes, I believe you should, you, Chat.
We restructure whose responsibility this is going to be. The person in the treasurer's office said we thought we were doing it, resigned and no one internally picked out those two pieces.
So if anything in this audit report gives me a little bit of goosebumps, it's this. The county records need to be recorded every single month. Bank recs reconciled within six weeks, that keeps you out of trouble, the state, so. I'm confident that this will not appear next year. I have great faith in the meeting we had with the administration last week or the week before, that this has been resolved and it's going to go away. But just, we can't have years where the county records not go recorded.
So do I, though.
Just your answer. Okay, we, you know, we talked about the official report. I want to hear some feedback from when you were here doing the audits. How was the paperwork? Did you get full cooperation? All that kind of stuff.
Yep, I'll be happy to talk about that. The.
I don't need a long discussion.
Nope, I get it. The county is very helpful to us when we perform our audit procedures. Chat, John, Michelle and Jen are very conscientious, they make sure that if there's an issue, I get a phone call, it could be in July, it could be in October, it could be in January. They don't wait until the last minute to correspond with me with issues that need to have accounting resolution prior to us being here for fieldwork. So it's a very collaborative relationship between the two of us. If there were material problems, you would know about that before today. I would have called for an audience with you when problems were going on.
I'm looking more, you know, when you look at other counties and you came here to do the audit for us, you know, are we doing?
Yep.
What we should be doing?
Yes.
You know, compared, you know, maybe everybody's doing good, but you know, are there things that we should be, we could improve on and that aren't necessarily violations?
Right.
But you know, that's what I'm looking at.
Yep. You have a very good set of internal controls. We test, we do systems walkthroughs, we will give verbal recommendations to management where we find efficiencies that could be made. And I will tell you that this is, this is a very positive environment to be in as an auditor. Not everybody likes the auditor hanging around the office and everybody here is very hospitable. The documentation is very good, it's thorough, it's accurate and we don't have a lot of issues with respect to information that's provided to us.
I'm all for stealing good ideas from other people.
Yep. I, and I just had this conversation this afternoon with Potasky. You know, when we send an audit team out here, they have experience auditing several counties or several cities or several townships or authorities. When we're looking at your records, in the back of their minds, they're saying, wow, I see county A doing this a little better, let's talk to Michelle and maybe she ought to consider something like this, you know? So that is an ongoing business, part of our business. It's not just the accounting standards and the audit standards, it's what helps for efficiency.
Stay ahead of the curve.
Yep, exactly.
So was treasurer's office able to catch this then before you started your audit process, which was March?
I was communicated to this shortly after fieldwork began, what had been March or April? Yep.
So if you say.
Well, I can address that. It was caused by the accounting department.
Oh, okay.
Jen, I know it's with Jen, I believe she's doing that calling.
Oh, good job, Jen. Okay. And fixed it.
And fixed it.
So by being fixed, and as you said, we've got a process now that this, we won't have this material finding next year, I'm confident. Even though we may have had a few weeks that we didn't reconcile books, no, it was not a few weeks. A whole month. You're meaning, you're meaning this year in '19? So in '19, we had some months that weren't reconciled. That is correct. But because we.
We have a plan.
Repaired it and have a plan, we shouldn't have a material finding for any of that.
If your January 31st bank recs were not reconciled by March 15th, there will be a finding on the APR for the state next year. And I don't remember when that January bank recs.
So we may have a couple years of findings. Okay, one more year. Because they weren't here until the 20th.
Right.
Okay.
Now, does it, does it end up being a, I'm sorry, does it end up being a finding or do we just indicate on the APR that this is an issue that was resolved during the year? That will be audit judgment that we'll perform in next year's audit, so.
Steve, do you, do you remember the grade you gave us last year?
I do. I was waiting for that question. Yep.
And what was it last year?
I think it was a B+.
And what is it this year?
It's an A-, we're getting better, yep. Yep. And had we not have had that little burp with the, with the Brownfield, you would have had an A. And keep in mind that, you know, Brownfield and Land Bank are component units, they're separate legal entities, right? And the daily grind of getting all the accounting records reconciled for the county, that's a lot of work in and of itself. These are separate units that need attention every month. So Land Bank got it, Brownfield didn't. So yeah, it kind of sounds smelly and ugly, but it's, we're going to fix it and it's going to be right going forward. If I told you, you were the first county who had a component unit that was not looked at, I would be lying to you. This does happen. It's not right, but it does happen, so. Well, Chat gave me five minutes, I'm a sposh over that, so.
Any other questions?
Any questions from the board?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for using Raymond and hats off to, to the crew that's in this room because if it doesn't, you know, this is a 130-page document and that doesn't happen with a little bit of blood, sweat and tears along the way, so.
You shaved it through.
Well, no wonder you moved back into the county.
That's right.
Didn't tell us which township, but don't tell me, I'll.
I'm in the city of Travis City.
More, that's worse than that.
I had a little, I had a little blast of reality when I left my little house in Long Lake Township to the city tax system. Changed a little bit.
Blame Tony.
Yes.
I'm going to, I move that Lealela County Warder Commissioner accept the 2018 audit as presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Well, you know, so many towns that doesn't have those city taxes.
I gave Mr. Lewis some grief when I saw him today.
[laughing].
All right. So there you go. That brings us to the sheriff's office.
Marine Grant, yes?
I would move to approve the annual Michigan Department of Natural Resources marine safety grant agreement in the amount of $28,600.
Score.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Now we bring to the Brownfield redevelopment authority vacancy?
The Brownfield did not meet today because we didn't have a quorum. So I would suggest we postpone till next month.
Okay.
Does that take a motion or?
Does that cause any kind of problem?
Not if we don't make a call.
No.
Okay.
Well, it does because in terms of quorum, it's not specifically, but that's one of the reasons there wasn't a quorum today because we're a vacancy.
Right.
And three people.
But other people were absent.
Yeah, other people were absent too, but long-term it was, short-term, no, not, not a month.
Let's try another month.
Can you mean a motion? Just hold on, yeah?
If there's no action taken, it just stays.
Okay.
Let me just skip it. Okay, so then that brings us to the register of deeds, the agreement.
Let me see, I don't know what I'm looking for.
Commissioner West, may I?
Yes.
I move to approve the price proposal and agreement contract for credit card services for the register of deeds office from Automated Merchant Systems Incorporated and allow the board chairman to sign the agreement and contract after review and approval by IT and corporate counsel.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0. That brings us then to probate family court, approval of the annual childcare fund. Commissioner, answer.
I move to approve, or I move to approve the childcare fund annual plan and budget for Lealela County fiscal year October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020 in the amount of $697,340.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0. So then we have the change of the board rules. Commissioner Law, here.
I would move to, I would move that we accept the attorney recommendation for the 2019 rules of order of procedure, Article 6, Section B, form to be updated as recommended.
Supporting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0. So then that brings us to a review of financials. Commissioner Law.
In late claims, we had another run, another food purchase for one of the schools, page 5. It's got to come up. This one was for pizza and I'm wondering if we should continue to pay, I guess in the first place, the question is, if this isn't Girls on the Run, should we be paying for a meal for this program? And number two, if we're going to do that, should we be consistent? We have $82, but it's for one school.
Commissioner West.
I did talk to Joe Pablo about that and, and it's no longer Girls on the Run, it's just Girls Run or something and it is all covered via the prevention grant program, I understand.
I got the same information.
Okay, and that's, that's half the question. So it's, it's not Girls on the Run, which we're kind of all familiar with, but it's just if it's a run group, what about consistency then?
But that's what I was wondering, if it's being held at every school, why is If it's being held at every school, why is the county paying for just this one?
Because it all should come out of this.
I think we're the only one, we staff only this one. The other ones, the staffs are school personnel.
I believe what Joel told me, that the other schools have taken on, they will pay those costs. Though, one school is not picking up the cost.
But they're all preventative?
They're spending the money from the preventive grant.
Okay, so then what this sounds like to me is, these other schools are saying, well, we've got this run group, because they have run groups. This one, is this because our employee is in charge of it, we're sliding it under preventative and calling it preventative and paying $82 for pizza? Or am I misunderstanding what's going on? Because it doesn't seem right.
You could look at it that way, yes. I'm not an expert in field.
I didn't, no, I'm asking.
Yeah, that could be perceived that way.
Well, and are her daughters in it?
I, well...
Are they still in school? I mean, I don't know, but, I mean, I know they did go to the school.
I thought you were about this, well, I don't, is that a good question? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either, you know, I just...
It just smells fishy to me. If I guess, as...
I guess the question is, if the county through this fund has the money, I would sure the other schools would like to take advantage of it also, because I know dollars are tight at every school district.
Well, there's a lot in this fund.
So I think that's the bigger question.
Yeah, I guess, and that makes, because that's what I was looking for, maybe was uniformity across our whole taxpaying county. And if you have schools that have this program, and if it is a successful program, a good program, and we feel like it's a good thing, and it's preventative, then it should be preventative across the schools, it seems to me. Or not.
Commissioner Anderson?
It's a good question. I guess what I would ask is that we get some follow-up and find out exactly what's going on.
We can certainly do that. Michelle has done a little bit of research, I can follow up with that, but we can follow up on that and get back to you. As I understand from Mr. Pablo's brief discussion this morning at the Senior Expo, the other schools have decided to pick up those costs for the program. The one school chose not to do it, and that's why they allocated funds to that school.
Smart school.
Because to keep the program going.
So, so are the people at the other ones being paid by the county? I mean, because the county's obviously paying her to go to St. Mary's, if she's charging the funds there.
The wages, right.
Yeah. I'm not sure when she does this.
We're not, we're not paying your schools. But we are paying this one. During the day, is it during a workday?
I don't know, I'm asking. I mean, I don't know what's happening, I mean...
Well, we did, I know she has resigned or retired from the Girls of...
That's what I thought too, because we, you know, gave her an ovation here for that, and yet, here she's still doing it under the county guise of what, you know? I'm sorry, Commissioner Anderson?
I would recommend that we remove the $82.92 from...
Well, it would be 88.21 with the 5.29 in the previous one.
Okay, 88...
21.
21. Remove that from the claims and accounts until we get further information.
Okay, I can, I can do that.
So is that a second?
I'd see if it passes.
My understanding, and I, I'm a little uneasy with, with, with that motion, because my understanding that we have a staff member who is giving of her time, not as a part of her job, but giving of her time to help the girls in a program that she believes in. And it covers, it's what she's, what she's spending her time on, the expenses she's expending, is, can be covered by the grant, so she's using it. And I think she was given permission to do it, and now not to reimburse her, makes me uncomfortable. I, I think we ought to find out and see if we can be consistent, but I would prefer that we go ahead and pay this.
Mr. Law?
I appreciate that, and I, I, don't look at that as a motion, because we're just reviewing financials right now, so we can make a motion a little bit later on that. But my answer to that is, should we get, want to get consistent, we can always go back and, and pay or reimburse. But I know that we've got, and I believe it's Trudy that's involved in the youth softball league for Glenlake. So, because she's involved with that, and I'm just using her for an example, and I don't mean to be picking on anybody, but if we say, somebody say like that, that's involved in the youth softball league, and because they're a county employee, and, and they're involved in this, and it's a great program, and they buy food, and we're going to reimburse for Glenlake school, that wouldn't be right, unless we have something that's going to reimburse Sutton's Bay and, and Northport, and, and a small sliver of Traverse City, and, and, who am I forgetting? School districts. So, anyway, that's all I'm saying. So, we have, a lot of our employees are involved in the schools, in a lot of sporting arenas. So I think, I think we should maybe figure, I, I did not talk to Joe, so maybe we could have Joe come for us and explain why he's doing one school and not a mob, maybe.
We can do that. Well, we have a motion to remove this from the claims and accounts. I think we're just unreviewed.
I think you'll do, this is just...
We're just unreviewed, you're right.
Post audit.
So we'll have to wait, so that actually can't, this isn't a time for a motion for that.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
I think what I was trying to, so we could get more information and not pay it in the meantime.
Right.
Is that okay with the second? Commissioner Lawner?
I, I wasn't sure if it was a second, so, but it would be okay with me.
I thought she had.
She kind of, so I second it.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just see a couple, a couple... Yeah, one more. I'm just on the drains, on, on page five also, late claims, is, we've got some more Schaumburg drain bills, and we're, we're putting those in, in a file for reimbursement, right? I'm going to ask that every time probably, okay. Because you know they went to the enterprise. But some...
Any, any other questions for, for financials? No?
We had Schaumburg drain bills, and, and, so they're going to be reimbursed eventually, as long as we keep track of what those are, and they were advertisements. So that's just pulling you like a second thing, never mind, Eric.
All right. Was there anything else?
Are you done?
I have none others.
Okay. Commissioner West, any?
No, I'm good.
So then we go to committee reports, recommendations, or resolutions. Special reports?
Yeah, just briefly, I passed out a budget schedule for this summer and fall. Take a look at it. If there's a conflict on our suggested dates, just let us know. We're looking at some meetings, the first suggested meeting would be July 23rd. So take this home, let your calendar, as you know, we are fairly flexible. We come up with some dates, but I know everyone's very busy in the summertime, so take a look. If you have a conflict and you know you can't come on any of those dates, let us know, and we'll try to work around it.
Do you think, well, mostly after executive meetings or before regulars?
No, they just vary. Because I think what you have told us in the past, you don't like to have a bunch of meetings after executive or before regular, it just makes for a long, long day.
Oh, okay.
We did talk about having a special meeting, and this will, we'll discuss this at our July Executive Committee about the HVACC project, once we have the bids. You can decide whether you want to have a special meeting to go forward or, or not in that, but we'll discuss that at the July Executive Committee meeting.
Okay, that brings us to public comment. Please come forward.
As I say, I've never been here, of course, to listen to procedure.
Can you just come up and sit, and if you say your name?
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Okay. My name is Jim Weigand, it's W-E-I-G-A-N-D. I live in Bingham Township. I just have a couple of real quick questions. One has to do with the workers' compensation, I heard earlier, is that considered a material contract to the county?
Well, in, in public contract, it's not, it's not question and answer, so we can tell you to answer that afterwards.
Okay, in that case, I, I didn't know, because I've been to a number of, if it's just a comment, then. I would say if it was a material contract, that I would expect that there would be an RFP, and if there was an RFP, I would expect that the date would be included in the RFP. So I would suggest that if it, there wasn't an RFP, that maybe that would be a way to avoid having problems in the future. The other issue is that I'm CPA, and since you won't answer questions, I guess it won't be a question. I guess I object to the fact that we spent well over an hour and a half on audited financial statements, and on the financial statements for the current year or year-to-date, and those aren't available to the public. It seems to me that every other entity I've been involved with, that those documents are available to the public when the government entity discusses them publicly. So in the future, I would like you to consider, for the very least, for the audit opinion. As CPA, even though I understand what he's talking about and what page, it's very difficult to follow and have any idea of what's going on if I don't have a copy from me. So I would like you, it was not available in the public documents that were available for this meeting. I would hope that the audit would be posted on the website, so that it would be able to be reviewed by the public. But I do think that you should ask the auditor to bring enough copies when you're going to go over the audited financial statements, so that the people in the attendance here in the public can also see the statement at the same time. So, that's my comment.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Seeing none, then we'll move on to Commissioner Thomas.
I just wanted to let everyone know today at the airport that we have, there was a ceremony to welcome Allegiant Airlines, because we now will have three direct flights year-round out of Traverse City, to three southern Florida cities, and we were told today, round trip will be about $150, $69 one way. So, it should be on the news, I'm sure it'll be in the paper.
I think it was.
It was.
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, so I'm a day late and a dollar short.
No, no, no.
It was on today's news.
I didn't hear it until just now, so...
That's great.
And I believe the cities are Fort Myers, Orlando, and St. Pete's Tampa area.
Yeah. Who wants to go there?
Who's going to go to Orlando?
It doesn't begin until October 16th.
Yeah, it starts October 16th. Commissioner West?
I, I think we ought to compliment April and the senior services staff for a very good day at, at Sutton's Bay, and our accounting staff, and our clerk, and our treasurer, and our administrator for the fine audit. So let's applaud our staff today.
Turnout was great.
Yeah, it was. I just wanted to say that the final committee meeting that, sorry, Co-Chair and I will be hosting for the Early Childhood County Committee is June 25th, and it'll be in the downstairs room at 9:00.
Any other comments? Okay, then that brings us to amendments and transfers. Commissioner Law?
I'd recommend approval of fund transfer 19-003.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
I would recommend approval of amendment number 19-005.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0. So that brings us to claims and accounts.
I would recommend approval of claims and accounts, $700,609.67.
I, I came up with $606.67.
Oh, I, I used 88.21?
Yeah.
I did it twice. Or thereabouts.
That's not going to fly.
I know it's not, that's where I looked at her.
606.67.
Yeah.
Is that what you gave?
Yeah.
Okay.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes 5 to 1. And then, that brings us to post audit.
I would recommend approval of, I move to approve, post audit, $1,538,743.55.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0. We are adjourned.